Regular. Oh, I'm sorry, Brian.
Yeah, you're all set.
Uh, so, you know, technologically savvy. So anyhow, I called over the regular Board of Commissioners meeting on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Shackleton, you can give us the pledge, please.
It would be my pleasure. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Roll call, roll call, men clerk.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Savoy.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here. We have a motion for any additions, deletions to the agenda.
I would move approval of the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. County Board minutes from March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Motion.
Support.
And support to approve the county board minutes of March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passed. Correspondents in the court's office, page eight of your packet. About nine there.
I'll move that we accept the correspondence and forward them to the committees as appropriate, necessary.
Thank you. Motion and support to forward the correspondence to the appropriate place. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes. All right, next we have public comments. Fifteen minute limit per subject, three minute limit per person, and feel free to step up to any, any place where you see a red light would be great.
I'm Becky Serriano, and I just had a question for you guys, something I, you know, all the rumor mills, you know, and I just thought it'd be interesting to nip it in the butter, to find out more about it. It was just, is there going to be housing development in Ken Ross along M eighty? And if so, we were just wondering, what is it? You know, where is it, what people is it going to benefit? So that's all, I just want to get some more information other than listening to a whole bunch of rumors. And also maybe you guys know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. On such things, we generally don't go back and forth, but during committee comments, we can address such things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gary Serrano, and I just want to voice some concerns about the Second Amendment rights and, and what the, whether our sheriff is going to stand by the Constitution or not. I know the governor is trying to put a lot of laws in place that will infringe on the people's rights. And I would hope that as commissioners representing and being voted to represent us and represent and I vow to uphold the Constitution that you would get with the sheriff and, and make sure that he is on board with protecting the people of this county and against infringement on our Second Amendment rights. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Oh, feel free, sir.
Hi, I'm Chris Olson, I'm the president of Chippewa County EDC. I just want to come and introduce myself formally. I've met most of you, everybody, I think. So if there's any questions you ever have about the EDC or the airport, please feel free to call me anytime and yeah, talk, okay?
Anybody else here? Brian, how are we out in cyberspace?
I don't see any hands raised.
No hands? Last chance here? No one's going twice? Declare public comment closed. Administrator's report.
Uh, the standard report, monthly reports from the Health Department, Veterans Affairs, Sheriff's Department, Animal Control, and the additional report from community action for their senior services, continuing to research on opioid settlement and how we can utilize those funds with North Care and/or MAP. Uh, the Health Department have been in contact this week with the attorney on the potential My Michigan lease, getting out of that lease and working, continuing to work on that with the attorney and the second appraiser. The first appraisal should be done within the next seven days.
Administrator Church for myself, had a, had a long talk Tuesday night on the bus ride home with, with Bus driver. He wondered where that money is going. He was just concerned that, you know, is it with all the pot shops and with the opioid stuff and all those things? Is, is it all basically going to help with those situations as far as?
The opioid funds?
Yeah.
We will make that decision as to where it goes and how we're going to utilize that funding. Are we going to go through North Care like we do currently with the convention tax and then people apply for grants through them? Are we going to try to do it ourselves? I mean, that's what we're still trying to do, so we have not made that determination, but you guys will make that determination. I'll get you the information and you'll decide and let me know.
That's kind of where I was at. But there's a lot, a lot up in the air, sir.
But there are a lot of strings attached to that settlement on how the money could be spent. So it's, it's not something you can just take and spend however you want in the general fund. It's, it's pretty, it's pretty well dictated that you can spend it on treatment and, and rehab, rehab and stuff like that.
Drug court, possibly, or probably. You know, things, things that are going to help with substance abuse issues in our community.
Yes.
Though we did have a survey today in our staff meeting, opioid use amongst, if they're being honest, amongst our high school students relatively low.
Yeah.
Well below the national average. Vaping, on the other hand.
Yeah.
Not, not so much. Smoking is almost disappearing. Less than two percent of our kids admit to smoking cigarettes, which I, I, I don't ever remember it being in single digits, but I think it's being replaced.
They tightened up on the prescriptions of opioids so tightly that it really nipped a lot of it.
Some good news. All right, thank you. Um, next we have Chippewa County EDC, speaking of which, we have to do these individuals accepting resignation, correct?
Yeah.
There are a motion to accept the resignation of Kimberly.
So vote, vote, Jim, you had it. I'll support it.
Motion and support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes. Um, application for the EDC appointment? That'll be a roll call vote. Page twenty-four.
Point of work, answer questions.
Yes.
Do we have to accept the applicants or, or?
Accept them and then waive your bylaws if you're going to make the appointment tonight, which is how we generally do it when, so we don't leave the board with, without a member for over two months.
Sure, do we need to do that as a separate motion first before we go to the vote?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that'll be cleaner.
All right. I would make that motion.
And so we'll have a, a motion to accept the applications. We'll do that, then we'll have a motion.
And waive the bylaws because what we normally have, you know, we put out the advertise for, for applications for a period of time, we let them sit for a period of time, and you know, so what we're trying to do is replace it, but we did advertise and did receive some applications and we already had some on file, so we're going to go ahead.
We have four applicants, I believe.
I'll support that motion. And just under discussion, I think we should thank Kimberly for her service.
So motion and support to accept the applications. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes. Now, let's see, we're going to, we're going to do a motion to vote for these and waive the policy in one, or do we have to do them separate?
You already accepted and waived the bylaws per Mr. Shackleton's motion.
So accept the resignation.
And then Kathy will do roll call vote.
And that'll be on page twenty-four if you want to take a look at the, the folks on that. Men clerk, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Uh, I'd vote for Todd Beal.
Commissioner Savoy.
Hi, Gary McDowell.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Gary McDowell.
Commissioner Trainer.
Gary McDowell.
Chairman Martin.
Gary McDowell. Well, you will welcome him into our governmental tent, and again, thanks Kimberly Miller for her service. All right. Next then, we have resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero four, U nine one one, collection authorization on page twenty-five.
I would move this for approval.
Motion. Support. Uh, any discussion with go to a roll call vote here, correct?
This is, under discussion, this is just something we have to do, is it every year or every?
This is something new that Director Postman had asked for. There, it's usually just a letter that he notifies the board of what the rate is going to be, but they are giving a little, just needing to go through more steps to clarify the dollar amount, and we are not changing it.
We're not, we're not raising it, we're not changing it.
Correct.
But it's just paperwork.
All right, then, any further discussion or questions? For the administrator? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, on resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Aye.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have National Irrigation Opioid Settlement Recommendations by White and Luxembourg. Can we put these two together?
Yes, and there's three, there's one on the next page.
Yes, so we can put all three of these together if someone would like to make a motion, so move. Motion to accept C one, C two, C three.
Support.
Support. Discussion on this, gentlemen, if you wish.
I think it was mentioned that, you know, there's a lot of strings attached, they're very strict in how we can spend this. And I'd like to keep a vocal if we can, I don't know if we have the ability to, to do that, but the administrator is researching that. Not only is there a lot of accountability, it's ordered by a court, which that judge will be reviewing, or they have to make sure it stays, guidelines, so it's, it's not going to be an easy task to spend this, but hopefully.
Hope we can get some guidelines, either, either from our own attorneys, correct, and, and plus direction from?
Michigan Association of Counties has actually hired an individual that is helping all eighty-three counties that want to work with them, and so we can get legal counsel through them.
That's great, that's even better, thank you. All right, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passed. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six, proclamation declaring April nineteenth.
You need to vote.
I'm sorry?
Twenty, you need to vote.
Oh, five. Um, resolution twenty twenty-three oh five. Roll call vote.
Oh my gosh, yes. I didn't see the resolution, all right. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh five, I thought we were doing them all together.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Okay, next resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh six, proclamation declaring April nineteenth, fifteenth National Public Safety Telecommunications.
So move.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
And Chairman Martin.
Yes. Twenty twenty-three oh six. Twenty twenty-three oh seven, appreciation of Melissa Pimmito.
I went from the hall, made a motion.
A motion for appreciation of Ms. Pimmito.
Oh, go ahead.
Motion and support. Any discussion?
Thank you for her service.
I'll get to see her, she's Coast Country parents, so I'll get to see her more now that she's retired.
Ready to work.
Sounds like a volunteer.
All right, go ahead, please.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Uh, next letter of, of support and recommendation of percent of crapland to be enrolled in the service, well, CRP.
I will make a motion.
Post support. Motion and support? Any discussion?
Yes, I was asked to bring this to the board, and essentially this is a a grassland protection program that you can enroll in, farmers can enroll in, and it's environmentally friendly, it improves habitat for birds, animals, buffer zones for cricks and certain, it's a win-win thing. Every county has allocated so many acres that you can turn over to this program. And there are strings attached, what you can do, what you cannot do, have for that term if you sign a five-year or a ten-year, and in return for the keeping it into grassland and not a housing development or whatever, they pay you a few dollars an acre. So it helps farmers, myself, I farm, I tried to enroll about five hundred acres of my farm into that program. I was only able to get about, I'm guessing forty, sixty acres, because they only allocate so many acres for each county. So essentially, the allocation had run out and I couldn't get my farm approved. But the issue here is every county has issued the equal amount of acres that they can enroll, and you take most counties in Michigan, if you look at them, especially downstate, have four or five hundred square miles per county. Well, we're sixteen hundred, so we get the same allocation as they do. So there's a loophole to request additional acreage, but it has to be approved by the county board, and there's, I can't see where there's any, anything wrong with this program, so that's why it's on the agenda. Doesn't mean we'll get additional acres, but we can at least put the requests.
And if we get it, there's less land for the Chinese to buy.
Yeah.
For vote, anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns?
No, we're supportive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes. All right, standing committee reports, personnel equalization and apportioning.
We met with Dulcie Rana, got to meet her. The committee was updated by the equalization director, provided information to the county's personnel and real property totals, equalized valuations, real and assessed valuations, real all are, of which are part of the L four zero two four report broken down by township acreage with the report showing each of the townships break down by the categories of agriculture, industrial, residential, timber cut over, and development. Committee also received a five point four percent increase in taxable values for twenty twenty-three and discussed, uh, proposal A, headly rollback and its effects on our tax bills. Committee was updated on prior changes with the townships and reminded that these responsibilities are per MCL and the equalization department with the townships. So you could still enter into agreements with any of the townships interested for a fee to assist the necessary tasks. Equalization Director Ranta asked the committee to approve the board to review equalized and certified figures on the L four zero two four. The committee discussed the June truth and taxation upcoming public hearing and discussion followed. It was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence, that the twenty twenty-three equalized and certified values tentative taxable values presented by Director Ranta be approved as reported and that all state required forms regarding same be completed and filed as required by statute and establish a truth and taxation public hearing for the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the county board on a voice vote, motion carried.
Like the motion.
Which support?
Support.
Motion and support? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Oh, I'm sorry. And then it was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, second by the Commissioner Lawrence, who during the meeting on a voice vote, motion was carried. Meeting was adjourned at ten twenty-two AM.
Motion.
I, I'd move that the minutes of the Personnel, Equalization, Abortion, Transportation, Health, and Social Services Committee be accepted by the board.
Support. Motion and support, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion passes. Very good, Chairman Wallace, that first time doing this.
That's a lot of words, man.
Commissioner Savoy seemed to be
Yeah.
Chairman of Finance, Savoy. He, he's got a few more words to say.
Down to the science.
The regular meeting of Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Finance, Claims and Accounts Committee was held on Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Meeting was called to order at four thirty PM. Members present was Commissioner Shackleton, Lawrence, Trainer, and myself. Absent was Chairman Martin. There are other people present, approve all agenda, it was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the agenda as presented, a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
We had one person speak under public comment, correspondence and information items, no action was necessary. We then moved into agenda items. First on the list was MIDC twenty twenty-four plan. It was discussed in detail, then it was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to authorize the release of the twenty twenty-four public defenders proposed budget to the MIDC, a voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Motion and support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Next was Central Dispatch Emergency Telephone Service Enabling Act. The resolution was forward to this meeting, we're for board. Next was Administration Recycling Collection and Disposal Renewal, January first, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. It was moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to on table the recycling collection, disposal renewal agreement on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support, Administration Recycling. Central Dispatch, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
It was then moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve an authorized signature of the renewal agreement between Chippewa County and Northern Transitions Incorporated with a Chippewa County Recycling Program Collection, disposal agreement for a four-year term running January first, twenty twenty-four December thirty-four, twenty twenty-seven. They request that NPI find a way to drop site the open until at least five PM on Saturdays or later on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support? Any discussion? Yeah, I think I got the same letter.
From the director, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Seen that, and made our decision based upon what we think.
Yeah, I just, I don't know. I mean, we're just kind of a standoff there, I mean, he, he cites his staffing issues, and I think we can sympathize with that, but I still think for the convenience of the public, I hope they try to find a way to shuffle things around so they could be open Saturday afternoons.
Certainly hope so, especially with the weather getting better. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Next is under, next five agenda items are under administration, the first is a pellet retainer agreement, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize a pellet retainer agreement between Chippewa County and themselves as presented for twenty-four months on voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Administration CIMA renewal for volunteer and work release liability and accidental insurance moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve, authorize a renewal application at a price not to exceed four thousand seven hundred seventeen dollars eighty-five cents for the policy term on voice vote, motion carried, I would so.
Motion. Support, support? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Administration New Policy Use For Company Issued Credit Cards Moved By Commissioner Lawrence, Supported By Commissioner Trainer To Approve And Authorize Use Of County Issued Credit Card As Presented The Policy Three Eighteen On Voice Vote Motion Carried, I Would So Move.
Support.
Motion and support on the used county issued credit card? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Administration Disposal Purchase Moved By Commissioner Shackleton, Supported By Commissioner Lawrence To Approve The Purchase Of Two Disposals For Restaurant Supply dot com At A Price Not To Exceed Five Thousand Three Hundred Two Dollars Fifty Four Cents And Voice Vote Motion Carried, I Would So Move.
Support. Support, any discussion on this, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Administration Bed Summary For Copiers And Security Camera System. Moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer To Approve And Authorize Purchase Of Two Copiers From National Office Products, one for a friend of the court and the other for probate family court office. On voice vote, motion carried, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support on the copiers and security camera system? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Finally, under administration is courthouse county building camera system moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Trainer To Approve And Authorize Purchase Of New Security Camera System For A County, For Courthouse County Building For Control Solutions And Corporation And To Approve A Budget Amendment For The Cost Of Project On Voice Vote, Voice Vote, Motion Carried, I So.
Motion and support for the camera system? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
Finance Claims And Accounts For March For The County And Health Department Moved By Commissioner Shackleton, Supported By Commissioner Lawrence To Recommend The Approval Of The March County Bills And Payroll, General Claims, Other Fund Claims, Payroll And Health Department Claims And Payroll Total Claims On A Voice Vote, Motion Carried, I Would So Move.
Support. Motion and support to pay bills? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, post, motion passes.
No, Commissioner spoke under committee comments, I spoke under chairman comments. It was then moved by Commissioner Shackleton, supported by Commissioner Lawrence To Adjourn, and the meeting was adjourned at four fifty-six PM, And I move for acceptance and distribution of this report.
Report, motion and support to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Close, motion passes. We are. Any commissioners have a report on anything else tonight?
Oh, yes, on your public comment, I think there was a question about some policy development and Ken Ross. Nothing's, to my knowledge, has come before this board. I've heard a lot of talk about it in the community. I think from what I have heard, it was initially going to accommodate some of the people working at the locks. It's a township issue, I don't think the county is involved in it that I'm aware of. As far as, I don't want to speak for our sheriff under the gun laws, the first, second amendment. But he's a good friend of mine and I can't see where he's going to not support the second amendment. I would be totally shocked. This board has taken action in the past. All of us are hunters, our own, own weapons. I, I just don't think anywhere in the UP or Northern Michigan, you're going to see that, that change.
I will say that when we were doing the second amendment resolution a few years ago, we did express his support for what we finally hammered out, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the housing issue, I remember seeing a article in Arizona, even a photo representation. And I remember sending it out board, but I mean, this was at least a year ago and I just searched my email and I can't find it.
You should have had one just recently.
Really?
That I forwarded.
Is it the one that has like the, the, the photo representation of it?
There was one that just forwarded, I want to say in the last ten days or so. And they, as of June first, I believe they plan on having about a hundred workers out there. And then it's going to multiply each of the years on the next June, like from one hundred to two hundred to four hundred. It is through Ken Ross Township. And I know when I notified the sheriff's department, they had some concerns and I think they were going to talk with the chief of police out there and make sure, but it is Ken Ross Township that has signed on with something because there is going to be some infrastructure left once the housing is no longer needed for the workers at the lock.
Right.
Is my understanding.
So. Representative Savoy, or representative.
It could be a promotion.
Commissioner Savoy is right. That it's nothing that's come before us and it's, and we don't have the ability to approve or disapprove it. But my understanding is it's temporary housing. This is housing, they roll in and then they roll it back out when they're done. It's meant to house locks workers. And that's really all I know about it, but yeah, I do think it's happening. But it's, it is happening, but it's, it's temporary housing and it's for the locks workers. That's, that's what, that's the whole deal. And I will say that I would much rather see the private sector able to address it. And maybe they could, because I think this is all like, I don't know, it's all government run operation. But there really is a shortage, you, you, there's no way you could place, you know, hundreds of people up here for apartments and housing. And even if you did, it would take up all the available housing and nobody else could ever. So, yeah, housing is an interesting situation right now, not just here, but including here.
Yes, sir.
I've attended two of Ken Ross Township's meetings concerning the housing and stuff there. They're going to police it themselves, they're going to have eleven o'clock curfew on the people that are in there. I don't know how they're going to control that part because there's a disagreement on the police force. Ken Ross Township, their officers don't want to get stuck having to patrol that section in there. It's going to be fenced off right across from the prison, goes all the way from the Shell station, all the way up to Anderson Tack.
Okay, well, there you go, here's the guy that knows more about it.
I've been attending the meetings out there just to see what was going on.
Yeah.
They've got the water and sewer they got to put into all the pads that they're going to put down for them, buildings that they're going to put them in. The only I haven't heard yet is where the people are coming from. But it's got to be people that are experienced in building locks. That's the only that makes sense on it, why they bring them in.
Guess we should have committed, let Commissioner Trainer speak first.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? I just pretty much echo what they said. I'll move to adjourn, thank you. Second, motion support, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Close, we are adjourned, thank you.